Okay, showtime. I'm gonna bring the call to order, the East Long Meadow School Committee meeting of March 11th, 2019, it is 6:00 PM. This meeting is being both audio and videotaped. Is anyone else audio or videotaping this meeting? Seeing and hearing none, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Since we have such wonderful meetings this year, I always like to start to my left to keep the good light going.
Jake Brady, student rep.
Bill Fonseca.
Sarah Trulio.
Gregory Thompson.
Rich Ficero.
Gordon Smith, Superintendent of Schools.
Elizabeth Marcian-Boucher.
Pamela Blair, Assistant Superintendent for Business.
Kathy Soletti, Research Secretary.
Thank you for that. Moving to item number two in the agenda, approval of minutes. Do I have a motion for 2.1, approval of February 25th, 2019 executive session meeting minutes?
Move to approve February 25th, 2019 executive session meeting minutes.
I have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Second, discussion. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed?
I think, am I abstaining on that one?
Yes.
Yes.
So, 401, once again, Mr. Marcian-Boucher breaks my unanimous votes.
Now, I can show that says A there, but I feel like...
No, wait a minute, you were at that one, I think it was the pre-
Yeah, but she abstained on the votes.
She abstained on one of those votes.
Okay, yeah.
So, you can approve the minutes.
You can approve the minutes.
But it says that I was present, but I also said that I said...
But you can approve the minutes.
You can approve your extension.
Because you're approving your abstention.
Oh, on that one, okay, I'm down for it, alright.
You wanna change that, Beth?
Yeah, we'll change that to-
You still approve the minutes.
Yeah, sure, yes.
Do you wanna take that vote again?
I will approve the minutes.
No, no. Okay, so that's five of them.
Alright, sorry.
Move to 2.2, approval of the February 25th, 2019 regular session meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve the February 25th, 2019 regular session meeting minutes.
I have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Second, discussion. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Anybody opposed? If you're unanimous, Ms. Soletti. Committee and subcommittee communications, Mr. Jake Brady, you're up.
Thank you. So, last Tuesday at the high school, there were a variety of activities taking place. So, the 10th and 12th graders took the PNA survey, which gave every student an opportunity to voice their opinions and experiences regarding many important issues that I faced, such as safety and well-being. During the same time period, 9th and 11th graders attended an assembly, which focused on the importance of staying away from drugs and demonstrating how negative choices now can impact you down the road. So, overall, a powerful set of activities to keep students mindful about how their habits will affect them in the future. And then also, last Friday and Saturday, Spartanum took place, and it was a phenomenal show. All of the acts were amazing, and students put in a lot of effort to make sure that the show was really good, and it paid off.
Lot of talent. It was really impressive.
Mr. Fonseca.
Okay, next Tuesday, March 19th, I will be attending a day-long program put on by Jeff Reilly, the Commissioner of Education, called Karios, Mapping Our Way Forward. In this program, education stakeholders from across the Commonwealth will help shape an early blueprint of what education will look like going forward, including all students, making sure that all students are included. So, I will definitely bring back reports on that. And also, a great job to the 125th Celebration Committee on the spaghetti supper that was held this past Friday night at St. Luke's, and to the catering, that was an excellent job.
Ms. Trulio.
Nothing, except the fact that I was at the 125th Kickoff Celebration, and it was wonderful, and thanks to Beth and Rich for helping to facilitate that wonderful evening, and it was very well attended.
Mr. Thompson.
I have nothing this evening, thank you.
Mr. Marcian-Boucher.
I think I'll start with Elie. You've received the check?
Yes, we did, thank you.
So, they can start, the teachers can start getting the wonderful grants that they have been given. I also wanted to state that although I had too many things happening this weekend, I couldn't go to Spartanum this year, but I actually made it into St. Michael's, which was miraculous on itself, and I have to say that Father Wayne went to see the show. He could not say enough. Wonderful things, not just about the show, but about the students, and to everybody that was there, and just to let them know, great stuff that's happening, the talent that we have, and I really think it said a lot, you know?
In his homily?
Yeah, yeah, that was what it was all about, and I was like, wow, I need to come often. So anyways, he really had wonderful things to say, and I tried making it the second night, but it was just we had so much happening. And then last night, I just wanna say, happy birthday to our chair.
I'm gonna segue with that. I was enjoying myself at the 125th pasta dinner, in coordination with the committee and working with the catering, and everything was going well, and I was having this conversation with Sarah, and this gentleman came up and said to me, "Is this your daughter, Mr. Ficero?" See, now that may be failed, thank you for the birthday conversation.
So, I shouldn't do the happy birthday?
No, no. Opportunity for visitors to address the committee, is there anyone out there behind that huge crowd that wants to address the committee? Seeing and hearing none, I'm moving along to presentations. As always, we have the riveting Assistant Superintendent for Business report.
Well, there's one donation listed there tonight, and I would like to ask the school committee if we could table this for this evening, so I could do a little more research on this.
Sure, we have a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to table item 5.2.1, the Bertschland Park gift donation from the Benevity Community Impact Fund.
I have a motion, we have a second.
A second.
Second, thank you, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Anybody opposed? Beautiful. All business, Superintendent's Mid-Cycle Report, you should have that in you. I'll kinda walk you through this. I made a comment at the end of each goal and/or standard. So, the first thing we have is progress towards student learning goal. Return the page, second page on the computer. And the words cited and commended are interchangeable. So, the superintendent cited for the following, establish a partnership with the Sand Hook Promise Organization, built into 2018-2019 budget funds to expand social and emotional programs, work with Director of Student Support Service to expand the partnership with Bay Path University, collaborate with District Management Group and ELPS Leadership Team to research more about social and emotional education and support. Moving along to professional practice goal, the superintendent has commended for the following, a yearly book study with the ELPS Leadership Team, a productive working relationship with other department heads, the town manager and town council, and the continuation of working closely with the IT Director, EL Public Library, Chief of Police, Fire Chief, Open Space Committee, and Town and Emergency Planning. I'm moving from that to instructional leadership standard, that's the first standard. And here I cite, the superintendent cited for the following, working across the district to utilize the new format for SMART goals, working with the ELPS Leadership Team to pilot new ways to collect and review student achievement data, and working with the Director of Curriculum and Data Specialist to utilize Google Data Studio. The second standard is management and operations, and here the superintendent has commended for the following, negotiating four unit contracts and seven individual contracts, revising the statement of interest for the MSBA core program, continue to work closely with the ELPD, ELFD, the Massachusetts State Police to maintain building safety and keep the district and school safety plans current, completing the MSBA Excel repair project for Meadowbrook, and expanding the use of Google Suite throughout ELPS. The third standard is family and community engagement. The superintendent cited for the following, continue to attend district and town events, partnering with the ELPS Nurse Leader to implement the Preventive Needs Assessment Survey, working closely with the IT Director to create a one-to-one program developed in the ELPS Diversity and Equity Committee, strengthening the EL Youth Safety Committee work, and involving interested parents in the community in the MSBA SOI process. Moving to the last standard, professional culture, the superintendent has commended for the following, attending the annual MAS-C/MASSS conference and collaborating with other superintendents, utilizing the ELPS teachers to present for the two full-day professional development days, and working with the Director of Curriculum to sustain an innovative culture with the ELPS academic coaches. And then additional educational notes, to summarize, and all the superintendents progressing into the proficient and exemplary area in the student learning goal, professional practice, oh, that should be goal. And the fourth standard is instructional leadership, management of operations, family community engagement, and professional culture. So that is the mid-cycle report on the Superintendent of Schools.
Nice job, very good job.
Thank you. Can't be done without all of you, by the way. It's impossible to achieve any of these things without all of you, so thank you so much.
Quite impressive.
All your support.
Yes, we have to accept that.
Motion, Mr. Thompson?
Move to accept the superintendent's mid-cycle review.
I have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Anybody opposed? Excellent. Alright, Mr. Smith, you're on. Update on the FY 2020 budget.
Okay, so, in your informational packets, we have a one-sheet breakdown that hopefully is relatively clear and informative as we sort of move down the spreadsheet or chart. The first part identifies what we would consider a level services budget. So, it incorporates contractual obligations, it incorporates some fiscal challenges that we were aware of at the beginning of the year and have been working on, things such as reduction of our state health grant, and then the negotiations when the minimum wage was increased at the state level, where we started to negotiate with the paraprofessionals, and obviously, we had a few non-representative groups of people that also we had to change the wage structure. Going from there, we have the four main areas of requests for new items in the operational budget, and so that's the social-emotional teacher at Meadowbrook, a social-emotional teacher at the high school, instructional technology specialist at the elementary level to cover both Maple Shade and Mountain View, and the hope to increase the district line item for curriculum renewal from $100,000 to $150,000. All told, as you go down, that would be about a 3.46% increase to our current operational budget. If you continue down the page, something that we see as a very positive trend, Governor Baker's proposed budget for Chapter 78 to East Long Meadow increases our Chapter 78 by 7.36%. And if you look back at the last two years, the governor's, actually, no, these are actually happens, not governor's budget.
That's correct, those are actuals.
The actual budget, where our state aid increased last year, or two years ago, excuse me, at 4.77%, and last year at 6.18%. So, the last three years, we're seeing significant increases in aid, which, given that the town is far above their foundation-level spending, and which means their net school spending is in the positive, that money flows directly into the town general fund. Even though it's really dedicated to schools, it's going into the town fund. So, last three years, based on education aid, the towns received increases of 4.77%, 6.18%, and this is the governor's proposal. What we've also seen is, it's rare that the legislature, who will weigh in on the budget next, reduces aid to education, once the governor's put out his proposal.
Well, I like the way this looks for us, and I think the, I know we haven't prioritized officially, but I like the way 2 through 5 flow. I don't want anybody else.
I think they again speak to the district's goals around supporting the whole child, while at the same time addressing the need for a rigorous curriculum, so having all of those main tenets of the goals that are proposed by the district and that are, or working to enact, having those addressed by the budget works in alignment with one another.
And to expand on what Gordon just said about the legislature going above and beyond, what the governor recommends, and I've said this before, there's a tremendous amount of pressure on the legislature to do something this year with the Foundation Budget Review Commission's recommendations for increasing education funding across the board for every district, every child, every, across the state. So, there's a lot of pressure on the legislature to react to that, so that would lead to an additional increase. Maybe not in the Chapter 70, but they would increase the Chapter 70, but it would also look at Circuit Breaker and funding that. Constitutionally, it's supposed to be at 75%.
Correct.
It's never there.
No, in fact, Dr. Welch was just in a meeting, and she was told that we should be prepared for 68%.
Right.
The state always likes to be conservative, just as we do as well in the budget, and just to let you know, the figure that I use for the budget, if I base it off of this year's current numbers, it would be about $750,000 that we would get if I was at the 68%, and I used the figure of $700,000. So, I felt that that was a sufficient, you know...
Did she say where?
I think, where, what?
Where she got that information?
She was at some webinar, Circuit Breaker webinar. I think she might be working on the...
The Connecticut Valley Roundtable of Superintendents had invited, two weeks ago, all the state reps and senators, and so Senator Lesser was there, Representative Puplo and Representative Ash were there, and when we started talking budget, Circuit Breaker was what I honed in on, because what it does for all districts, but it definitely does for us, is it gives us somewhat of a safeguard if you have all of a sudden a situation where you have to have a few outplacements that you weren't expecting. So, it's interesting, hopefully, I mean, obviously, in those type of settings, there's a lot of nodding and agreement, so that's why I was interested who...
Yeah.
What was the number you calculated, Pam, for the upcoming?
700,000.
700,000, what did we receive last year?
This currently is 793,000.
Okay, so it shouldn't be down.
So, I used, because that's a higher percentage, like, I think it said 71, maybe 71%.
Well, there were two supplemental budgets passed in the course of this fiscal year that beefed up Circuit Breaker a little bit. It was on both radars of the House and the Senate, and there was a lot of pressure put on them again, because the governor underfunded it, and the legislature didn't react until they saw what the revenues were gonna be throughout the course of FY 19.
And they typically come back and fund it at the 70, 71, but they don't, they don't wanna say that upfront, they're comfortable saying 68%. So, you know, respectfully, that's what we use for our budgeting also.
And Chapter 70 is roughly 11 million?
12.
12.
For currently, FY 19 is 11 million, 253,729.
My governor's budget looks to increase that by about $828,000.
Yeah, and so, we have to also recognize that part of that stays on the town side. I know it's not directly correlated, but there are town-side expenses for the schools as well.
Correct, absolutely.
So, I understand our justification in that, we just have to be careful on how we push that too much.
Correct, yeah.
Right.
Worth noting, certainly, especially because of the amount and the percentage.
Right, given that percentage, the 3.46 doesn't look too steep a request.
Well, but if we're down 100 in Circuit Breaker already, potentially, right?
Well, for budgetary purposes, it's all on the paper.
And I'm being very conservative.
But it's on, that's what's on our budget proposal, so we're looking for specific sources. Well, we don't consider the sources necessarily.
No, Circuit Breaker, so you look at added district tuition, it really is funded by three different areas.
Right.
We have a significant portion in the budget under added district, it's a line item, added district tuitions. We also have money coming in, as do all districts, from the ADA special aid grant, and then the third one that we would go to would be Circuit Breaker.
So, all of those are components to fund the special education.
And that goes into a revolving account, Circuit Breaker, remind me?
That's correct.
Yes, okay.
Controlled by the school committee.
Is there a balance in it?
Yeah, I give it to you every month when I record it, when I...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Percentage of this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because as the year goes on, it's expended as the year goes on.
We'll just have to answer the questions that were asked tomorrow night.
Well, I do, why don't we, I'll let you do two steps. The volunteer is first, accept this budget, it's presented by the superintendent.
Yep.
I would put it in a motion that's preliminary.
Yeah.
Right.
Good point.
Based on...
We don't have parameters yet.
Right, I mean, tomorrow, technically, we're supposed to receive parameters from the council, so, yeah, this is preliminary, and we would have to revise as needed depending on what we hear.
Can I just chime in to make sure everyone does know, but I did get an email from Sarah Menard, the town accountant, a few weeks ago with a template on how she wanted it presented back to her. I just wanted you to know that, so, there was no FTEs that they were asking for, they wanted, you know, information about your contractual obligations and what your amounts are that you're requesting, and anything new, and that's really what she wanted. We have not shared any information yet, we wanted to come to the school committee first. And of course, I just finished this up, literally, a few days ago, so...
Could we do a snapshot of FTEs on a certain day, like the first day of school, the past three years, is that?
Doable.
Available information?
Yeah. Sure.
You know, I think we should pick a date and just look at it consistently as we go. And then I would say, if we're going to present anything tomorrow, we could present something similar to this, I don't know, Pam, how it fits into the, have you done that, that Sarah gave you the...
I have it ready, I have not shared that with, I haven't...
But I would say that if we use something like this, we would go with the level services percentage of 2.63%, and then probably just with all of the requests at 3.46%.
Yeah.
Yeah, so level services and requests, just instead of each of the two.
Okay.
As we move.
Got it.
You know what I'm saying? But the rest, I think, looks good if we gave them something like this, is that what we're thinking?
But I would take out the column of cost of grant total, right? I mean, we just wanna give them line one and combine lines 2, 3, 5.
Well...
I don't wanna break it down one by one.
Right, because they're not the ones that wrote on...
Well, they can't tell us how to spell it, that's what they're doing.
They might want, you know, justification.
They're gonna wanna know, though.
Well, we could tell them.
They're gonna wanna another 50, 'cause that is what it is, and then it's just three FTEs, three positions.
Correct.
Now, are we gonna put in justifications as to why we want, I know the teachers have, the admin have, we're gonna let the council see that, too?
They do have an area on the town side that allows for comments and description, and so we would add that. The hope would be that you follow that up with future meetings, where you can actually get into more detail than what you can put in a notes section of a spreadsheet.
So, we say we'll put line one, the next time is gonna say, in addition, three FTEs and 50,000 for curriculum supplies, and that's gonna be line number two?
But I would suggest that we list out the specifics of the FTEs, I think that's part of the justification. I know it's not up to them, but...
So, just the way it is?
We always have to.
No, I don't want them...
Okay.
I don't want it broken down by percentage.
Okay.
Well, you could put...
You could put number one existing, which is level services, number two, three FTEs, a social-emotional at Meadowbrook, social-emotional teacher at high school, instructional technology specialist at Maple Shade. That's your second one.
And then just list...
And then the third, I would break out, I don't know if you think so or not, but the curriculum one, we're gonna break, it's 50,000, it's 50,000.
Well, you gotta, I would break it out as well.
'Cause they're gonna want justification, they're gonna wanna know that number.
They're gonna want justification.
So, three lines.
Yeah, it would be three.
I don't know anything.
Well, I think the only percentage I would put in there is the contractual, because I think they need to know that...
Yeah, the 2.63, yeah, but the 3.46, they're gonna wanna know the end result, if we were to get all of them.
Yeah, right.
They're just gonna wanna know, I would wanna know.
Yeah, got it.
And then I would like this, the bold, next, 828, 292, could you put how much we are asking for from items 2 through 5, I think it's around 252,000, you know, the school, district is requesting, so you can compare and contrast, and we get the 7.346, the district is asking for 3.46. Then down below, 4.77, what do we get, 2.1 in FY 18?
Correct.
Right, and what do we get, last year, 6.1, you got 2.0?
Last year was actually 2.1, the year before was about 1.9.
Could you please put them in parentheses, so we can compare and contrast?
Yep.
So, we can say, listen, here's what we've done the past two years, and what possible to get this year.
Yeah.
So, they can see how, well, we're living within our budget, but now...
Yep.
Pam, you all set with what you're going?
I do, yeah. We're together on that.
One item that becomes confusing is if you take out the internal transfer that covered the town costs for transportation, then it's a 2.1% increase.
That's what we want put down.
If you, okay, but if you include it...
But it is part of us now, and that was something we were talking...
Well, you can make note of that in there, explain in parentheses the additional amount that was transferred, that would skew that percentage.
Right, it gets confusing.
Well, 'cause we were concerned about them, thinking like all of a sudden it's ours.
Why are you putting that up?
Right, it's all one, I think we're all one.
But mathematically, it's not gonna add up to 2.1.
It's a percentage increase over the year-to-year budget.
Oh, I see what you're saying, because it's 2.1.
So, if you looked at our budget, and you don't have the explanation of, you know, you're gonna see, you're gonna say, oh, that was a 3 point X. But it wasn't. That was an internal transfer, so it just went from one side of the town budget to the other side.
So, do we not list those? Do we each have the percentages there?
I think you can do the 2.1, but also in parentheses, just mention, notwithstanding the increase for busing transfer.
Yeah, something like that, yeah.
We don't need a number to that, even, just, we'll make, we'll acknowledge that happened.
Okay.
So, if we're questioned about it, that's why it's 2.1.
Okay.
So, now, last year, we didn't have any FTEs additional, did we?
Yes, we did.
We tried to keep it under how many?
We were just socializing.
Yeah, we did have FTEs that were requested.
How many, there wasn't, okay, but then we also reduced by the number of bus drivers. Not that that matters, but, okay. Well, I'm just, you know, my head is, we ask for, yes, we ask for, you know...
It doesn't in terms of insurance, and short-fits.
Yeah, I'm talking about benefits.
Yeah.
I mean, you're paying it basically through...
You're paying for it somehow, but...
The only other item, I don't know if we need to talk about it right now, or if you vote on this, and then if we bring it up, but for your, the school committee, your stipend, I was, I planned on, I assumed that you would probably want me to submit the same thing that I did last year, in the same exact terminology.
Right, yes. Well, you gotta put it on here, though, right?
It's in that number.
Yes.
Where is it?
It's not on the sheet.
No, it's separate.
It's separate.
No, 'cause that's separate.
It's a separate line item.
It's separate line item.
The other one actually comes under the town's budget, but they always bring it forward, because it's the school committee's statement, so I get to...
So, two separate sheets.
That's correct, 399, Department 399, and the school is Department 300, so it's a separate item. So, again, I don't know if you want me to remind you of what that was.
So, it's basically our other budget?
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's a professional development budget, I think. Is that money in there, too?
No.
No, it's a different...
My question, some council's getting $7,000 each?
No, they're getting, I think, I think councils are getting 35, the vice president gets 55, and the president gets 75.
And so, just to remind you, this is what I've written here, the school committee respectfully requests an increase to the annual stipend paid to the school committee members, four of them, from 1250 to 3500, and an increase to the school committee chair, one person, from 1750 to 4,000. That's your request, which you put in for two years.
That's not unreasonable at all, I really don't, you spend that in...
So, I just wanted that vote.
Well, we're the only other executive board in town.
That is elected.
Certainly spend as much time as the council.
Yeah.
I agree.
We're half budget.
In fact, we're an executive board, they're the legislative board, so if we really In fact, we're an executive board, they're a legislative board, so if we really, technically on it, typically the legislative boards make more than the executive, I mean, the vice versa.
Hey, Rich, I hate to say this, but it might be worth you talking to the town council president about our request, one on one. Because they are, the councils ultimately, well, it's Denise that brings it forward.
Denise brings it forward, that's correct.
I would make the town, let me rephrase that, make the town council president aware of our budget request. Because it's the town manager that brings it forward, and we'll just have to make, try and make sure.
Hey, I know back in the day, I paid more for babysitters than I got a month.
Oh, yeah.
So we're also developing two sheets for tomorrow night?
That's right, yeah.
Can I ask one clarifying question on the justifications when they're written up? Is that, so in the past, have those justifications been tied back to what's coming in terms of the state? So thinking about how the state has the social emotional competencies, and how really the, the ask of the full-time employees to support that is really in direct alignment with what the state is technically asking us to move forward with, the same with the curriculum? Because now we're thinking about adjustments to curriculum frameworks?
It's a multiple part answer.
Okay.
On the spreadsheet that we send in, we don't go into as, as much detail. And what we've done, since we've gone into a new form of government, is in years past, we've had more meetings by this time with town finance director and town manager, and we've gone through all of that. And then we reiterate it when we actually have our budget hearing.
Okay.
And we go through all of that. What we used to do in the old form of government is we had those type of meetings with appropriations and, and went into much more detail than we've gone with the town council.
Okay. But I mean, just thinking about it, like.
Those are key pieces which.
It's all based on what the state.
The town council, the town manager, and town finance director need to know.
Right.
So the first that we usually sit with the town manager and the town.
It's the town manager's responsibility to present, present our budget to the council for their approval, ultimately. But a lot of work, a lot of education.
Yes.
And that's an excellent point, because that's.
They need to know.
Where, where education's going and where they want it.
Each one of these is tied to a state initiative.
And you're getting increased in chapter 70 funding.
To then fulfill what the state is asking you to actually do, so.
So asking for just about half of the increase, I don't think is too large an ask.
Especially when you're only seeking to actually, lack of a better term, actualize what the department event is asking school districts to do.
Right.
Right.
Makes good sense.
And make it a, a non unfunded mandate by actually correlating the funds from the state, what they're requesting. Makes perfect sense. Toss it us.
Which we, we haven't had to do, but one of the things that they're very aware of is, we work within our budget. If you do this well, you should be keeping more students in district. If you have a, a few situations that are unexpected, we know that special education, certainly out of district tuition, can quickly become extremely costly in town, sometimes, or excuse me, school departments sometimes have to go back to the town for some type of emergency transfer. We have not had to do that many years.
Once in my, once in my time on this committee, once in my time on this committee, there was an emergency meeting for a $250,000 transfer in the middle of the year.
It can be very, very costly.
Right, yeah. With all the reason why circuit breaker should be funded at 75.
That's right, that's right. So, but that was a long time ago.
Thank you, just wanted to clarify.
So I guess we'll take a motion to approve a preliminary FY20 budget.
Go ahead, Greg.
I'll move to approve the ELPS FY20 preliminary budget as presented.
A motion, I have a second.
Second.
Second, further discussion. Have a favor, please say yes.
Yes, yes.
As opposed, you are very wealthy, unanimous, Mr. Salee. Moving forward now to school choice.
Okay, so your packet, well, let me, let me preface before I talk about what the actual information in your packet. Every year by regulation, school departments have to discuss participation in the school choice program in the state and either continue to participate, or in our case, continue to not be part of that program, or change and make a decision to become part of the program. Historically, East Long Meadow has at one time been part of the program. I think that's probably now going back at least 15 to 20 years.
Before my time.
And since that time, we have not been part of the program. So you have a few things in your packet. One, just student information management system reports on enrollment, current enrollment. So obviously you would project those numbers, if you're thinking of next year, into the next grade level. And then you also have a series of charts, all of which are coming from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education website. It just gives you an idea of the seven districts that make up the Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative. The red is students going out for choice to other districts, and the blue are students that each district is bringing in over the last nine or so years, 10 years. If you notice, you have six other districts in addition to us. We're the only district not participating in the choice program. Currently, we have 13 students who are going out. I think, Mr. Frichero, you pointed out when you saw your packet last week, that that's the, the second fewest to one other district in the LPBC.
By a long.
By Ella.
Yeah.
Ella. However, 13 going out at 5,000 is about 65,000, just so you know.
Just to add more data, so if I, if I look at the, the cover sheet, the four grades that have the lowest enrollment are the second, third, fourth, and tenth, correct?
Yep. So we always do discuss this as a leadership team. I think the leadership team last few years has had the same recommendation that they would be comfortable entering into the school choice program, should the school committee vote to participate in the next school year. They'd be most comfortable in doing so in a very structured way, looking at, just, Mr. Frichero, what you just said. You know, where are we, say, under enrolled, or what grade levels? Now, from a parent's perspective, generally, parents are a little bit more eager to get into a school choice program when they're moving schools. So, you know, you, if they're moving from an elementary school to the middle school, you get many more inquiries for sixth grade. Or if they're moving from a middle school to a high school, you get inquiries for ninth grade. But that, you can participate in the school choice program however the school committee chooses to. You're not locked in in any way. So we could receive students, if you're looking at the numbers that Mr. Frichero just talked about, you could look at receiving students at second grade next year, you could receive them going into the fourth grade. Sixth grade is not oversubscribed, you do have a decent sized fifth grade right now, but it's not. If you look right now, eighth grade's our largest class at 233. We average generally in the graduating class somewhere between, say, 205 and 210. Right now, you have 213 in the 12th grade.
Well, you all know how I feel about it. So people move into this town, I feel they move into it for a reason, they pay their taxes. And I, as a parent, understand that once these students come in, if we do school choice, they become ours. And they are ours, and we need to educate them properly and give them what they need. But at the same time, you know, cause I've experienced good kids through school choice where I am, and I've experienced kids who've come in and they've created, I might take away from the experience a little bit. It's one thing if someone's paying taxes, I guess I feel. I, I just don't like it, I feel that we have a healthy budget. I think that we have, we're not struggling to pay our bills at this point. And quite frankly, I think if we start this, it's gonna be anticipated every year by the town council that this money's gonna be coming in, and it's just gonna be water under the bridge. So I think it's something to keep in our back pocket for an emergency. Not to be derogatory toward any of these students, they're wonderful kids, but at the same time, people pay their taxes, and I don't think there's only so much room in certain classes for certain kids, and I hate to think that one kid isn't gonna get in because somebody else is coming from another town, so.
You're talking about honors classes and so forth.
Anything, anything, whatever it is, if, if there's not room in it, and you know, you've got a student that's on school choice, and a student from this town, and it's between one and the other, and our student does, I just don't think that's fair to the people who pay taxes. It takes money away from the sending towns too. And I, I, I just feel like it makes you a pseudo charter school, kind of sort of, and I, that's how I feel. So I'll leave you guys with that.
I'll throw it out there from the budgetary aspect of, it costs more than $5,000 to educate our kids.
It does.
And we get $5,000 as a receiving school district. So in essence, it's a, you know, to expand on what Beth said, we're losing money. And eventually, it's gonna become a strain on the budget, and I'm always concerned about class sizes. Yeah, we've got some classes that aren't large, but we saw a couple of years ago what happened with the kindergarten issue, when we had to meet in August and, and all of a sudden come up with a plan, and we were successful and it was supported. Those kids are still here. It could happen again at any grade, and that's a concern that I have.
Just one point, and Pam, correct me if I'm wrong. You're absolutely right, the 5,000 is not, nowhere near the per pupil expenditure. I think though, you're gonna get the 5,000 and your enrollment of students who have come in as of October 1 will set your state aid.
Right.
So if you're, they're going to get counted again in the moment.
But if we keep, if we keep expanding this program, cause once we get in, you expand it, we're always gonna be chasing it. We're gonna be one year behind. I agree with what you're saying, and I should have included that. But if we take five kids this year, and we take six kids next year, we're still chasing that, that money.
And then become dependent on it.
And we do become dependent on it.
I mean, I don't, next town next to us, they're dependent on it for their budget.
Well, it becomes part of a budget, you know, it becomes.
Remember though, they're a regional school.
They still are dependent on it.
But it's, it's also, it's a different, I guess it's different, look at it differently in a regional district as opposed to a district like ours. Why the other districts around this, why the other member districts of the collaborative do it? That's up to the individual committees. I know where I still stand on this.
Anybody else?
I think too, like just from an instructional standpoint, right now, there's a lot of shifting happening in terms of DESI and new curriculum frameworks continue to come out. We're experiencing a next generation assessment at the high school. We're in consistent talks with MSVA around the potential of a new facility coming in, and that, that's a lot of change already for a district of our size to sustain. So when you think about also layering on more new to something that's already unsettled in a lot of ways, that you wanna be able to balance how much educators can, can necessarily take on in any given year, and, and then what, what do students then receive on the other side of that? So if my, if my teacher is already processing new frameworks and the potential for a new building, and all kinds of social emotional competencies that are coming, coupled with DLCS standards.
I think a lot of new things gets thrown at educators.
There's a lot of new things, so I think if, if we can mitigate that on behalf of educators and students and administrators, and say, for now, we can hold off on adding one more element to their plates, that I'd rather see educators continue to grow and hone their practice and really have time to, to be the best that they can be. And then if we cross this bridge and things are a little more settled, especially with initiatives coming forward from the state, then that might be a better time to have that conversation personally.
And I think in order to make it work, you have to get up to some of the numbers that some of these other districts are already at. Yeah, they're in the 50s, 60s, hundreds. Well, I think that speaks to what Beth said, dependency.
And now you're talking about additional staff, cause if you are 100 students, you can't do that with the existing staff that we have. You know, perhaps if you replace those that were leaving now with, with the same amount. But then I think your, your benefit is moderately negligent, negligible.
I'm impressed the fact that our administrators have big, kind hearts. They do not.
Big, kind, cautious hearts.
All right, yeah, we gotta vote. I move that we accept school choice for the FY20 school year.
You have to vote negative.
You have to vote, you have to vote positive.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, discussion. Okay, so it's a roll call vote, cause it goes to the state.
When we vote, we vote to the negative, we don't want it?
Correct.
Yes.
The motion was to.
Yep.
Just the motion has to be positive.
Mr. Fonseca?
No.
Ms. Trullio?
No.
Ms. Marcin Boucha?
No.
Mr. Thompson?
No.
Mr. Frichero, no. Any others? Thank you. Wow, we are done? Okay, so first, we thank you to Jake as always, and Jamie, thank you so much over there at LCAP. Do I have a motion of adjournment?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussions? Those in favor?
Yes.